Good evening, everybody. Time is six thirty eight and I am calling to order. Uh, actually, first I'm calling to order a public hearing, uh, to adopt our twenty twenty-three budget. Um, so before our actual work session, we're gonna do that public hearing first. Um, Mr. Metric, do you have any presentation on this or is it just that we adopt the budget as it's?
This is a, a public hearing to, uh, have comment in about the twenty twenty-three operating budget. Uh, we do have an exhibit which is the legal notice, uh, advertising this hearing. Uh, the notice was placed October twenty-six, twenty twenty-two. Um, there's no presentation to go along with this. We, we had a presentation in October. Preliminary budget has been published on the borough's website accessible to the public. So at this time, are there any questions, uh, from council regarding the budget? Uh, seeing none, are there any comments from the public regarding the twenty twenty-three, uh, operating capital spending plan? Yes, seeing none, the, the budget is in a position to be voted upon by council.
Okay, and I'll just, uh, um, note that, um, we're adopting this budget, but there's no need for a, uh, ordinance or any kind of, um, other hearing because there's no, there's no tax increase. So we can just adopt the budget just by a vote.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the twenty twenty-three budget as it's been presented.
I'll second it. Okay. Mr. Metric, there was a motion made and seconded to adopt the twenty twenty-three budget as presented. Would you please call the question?
Yes.
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 Yes. Uh, motion carries seven zero. Thank you very much, Mr. Metric, for all that. Okay, I'm gonna close that public hearing and now I'm, uh, at six forty. I'm now going to call to order the November sixteenth, twenty twenty-two, uh, Borough Council work, uh, voting session. Um, number two is our pledge of allegiance. Can I please have that led by Mr. Flynn? Okay, thank you very much. Um. Item number three is comments, suggestions, petitions by residents and attendants regarding items that are not on the agenda. If anybody wishes to speak, uh, come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Thank you.
Good evening. Bethan Rosica, three three eight West Minor Street. I am just here to follow up from last month's meeting where I asked Borough Council to make a retraction of their statements claiming that the Outfest was originally canceled due to dozens of vitriolic and hateful messages. The data that I compiled clearly showed that that statement was incorrect. And even John O'Brien had admitted that the festival was originally canceled due to lack of volunteers and lack of sponsorships. So I'm here yet again this month to ask council to please correct the record so that our community and the surrounding community does not think that we live in a hate-filled town. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Hi, come on.
Good evening, guys. John McDonald, five oh three North Walnut Street. Um, so I was on Amazon the other day and I came across this, this great book, this children's book, number one bestseller on Amazon, actually. And I thought I'd come down here tonight and read it to you guys, a little excerpt from it. Some of you might know it very well. Um, it's called The Boy Who Cried Hate. The year was twenty twenty-two in a lovely little hamlet called Westchester. It was recently dubbed as the virtue signaling capital of the world. According to all of the yard signs, hate did not live here. A boy named Jussie Stefano knew this. He slugged around town and noticed just how great this place was. Sprolling restaurant scenes, smiling faces and children laughing. Truly a great place to be. But something was nagging at Jussie. You see, Jussie was just bored with all the love and laughter going around. He wanted to do something to disrupt it and he had a plan. He recently read a book called Rules for Radicals. It gave him the idea that in the absence of something, in this case, a lack of hate, he could fabricate and agitate. He even printed up this slogan on a T-shirt and he wore it proudly. At the next town hall meeting, Jussie got up to the mic and conjured up a hate hook story for the ages. He proclaimed that he had dozens of vitriolic and hateful emails from town residents about other members of the community. The crowd gassed in horror. The local CCP-owned newspaper, The Daily Lazy News, salivated and quickly ran the story without seeking evidence of such emails. The story spread like wildfire. Jussie smiled like the Grinch who stole Christmas. You know the one. At last, citizens were divided and insults and rumors ran amok on the interwebs. The town was torn apart. But then a heroic truth detector emerged from West Minor Street and called Jussie out on his bluff. She asked him to provide evidence of his claims. Seeing as Jussie didn't have any evidence, she illegally obtained his emails and they revealed something terrible. You see, it turns out that Jussie hadn't received dozens of emails. It was much worse. He had received not a one. Oh, Jussie. Embarrassed, he tried to slink away, hoping this was all just disappear. Surely, The Daily Lazy News would call him to answer for his fabrication and set the record straight. Crickets. Turns out, this news publication was not interested in the truth, but rather narrative management and a cover-up. However, this story has a happy ending. Many residents were onto the hate hook story and were willing to go with their fellow citizens and hold them accountable for the truth. With this newly emerged social compact, Jussie wouldn't be able to conjure up falsehoods anymore. This lovely, beautiful, wonderful town, where people from all walks of life and different lifestyles, was and always has been loving and accepting. Thank you, Tiger.
Okay, thank you. Moving on. Item number four is comments by Borough Council and the mayor, and we will start with Mr. McCoy.
Thanking everyone. Uh, want to wish everyone a, a very lovely Thanksgiving next week and, uh, looking forward to spending some time with family and friends.
Thank you. Ms. Vaccaro.
I want to echo Mr. McCoy's comments and remind everyone to come out and shop local next weekend. There will be free parking. There are wonderful shops all over our borough. We all come from very different backgrounds and have very different opinions about how things should move forward. But one thing that I think many of us can agree on is that our local community needs our support. Come out, shop local, enjoy the beautiful decorations that have started going up and continue to go up. And I'm looking forward to this holiday season. Thank you.
Thanks so much. Mr. McGinnis.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, everyone, and I just wanted to, uh, give a shout out to my colleagues up here for, uh, their hard work they've done throughout this year, especially my colleagues on the Finance Committee, Councilman Flynn and, and Chair of the Finance Committee, uh, Nick Allen, as well as Barb Leononi and, and Sean Metric for helping craft a budget that makes, uh, investments within our community, within our police, within our fire, uh, public safety, uh, within our parks, within our IT moving forward, and no tax increases. I think that is a good thing. Uh, it's a very good thing, especially within the climate we're in. Inflation, it's coming down a little bit, but it's still there. And I think that, uh, showing no, uh, the ability to craft a budget that doesn't increase taxes during these challenging times is a testament to everyone up here. Again, Mr. Metric, uh, for the hard work that you've done and it allows Westchester to thrive moving forward. So, um, thank you for that.
Thank you. Mr. Flynn.
Greetings from the sweetest ward in the borough, the Sixth Ward. I've often heard, you just can't make it up. Uh, the Sixth Ward's unbelievable. Not only that we are that we the sweetest ward, now we actually have a bake shop for dogs and cats and ice cream. Can't make it up. On South, um, High Street, there's a new place called Cinnabon. If you haven't been there, it's a party for your mouth. It's, it's, it's unbelievable down at the Sixth Ward, again. Um, one issue down at Everhard Park that's been worked on is, um, the zip line. Everybody wants to know what's going on with the zip line at Everhard Park. Well, people probably my size decided that they wanted to try jungle jumping and going through the zip line. And they bent the, the bolt. And you can't just put any kind of bolt into the zip line. Uh, it's been all over next door. What's the borough doing? Yada, yada, yada. We could just slap a bolt in there, but if it breaks, we're in trouble. Okay? So we have to use the proper manufacturing bolt. And the last thing is, um, St. Agnes Church held a, a mass, a blue mass for all first responders just recently. Uh, it was, uh, attended by the Fire Department, the EMS and the Police Department. And the, the children of, uh, St. Agnes and Westchester Borough had a great time interacting with our first responders and have a nice Thanksgiving and go down to Cinnabon as a party for your mouth, I'm telling you. So.
Thank you. Is it called Cinnabon? City buns.
When you put that in your mouth, you, you, it, it's, it's amazing how you walk down home. It's, it's unbelievable.
You gotta get there early because they sell out.
Yeah, it's, it's a party, I'm telling you.
Thank you. Mr. Allen.
I never know how to follow you, yeah. Uh, greetings from the Second Ward, I guess. Uh, I just wanted to thank everybody for coming out to vote. Uh, it was my first time getting to actually vote in this room, um, which, uh, was weirdly cool for me. Um, weirdly sentimental about some things, but, um, uh, turnout was great. I'd never seen, um, turnout like that in a while, so that was, um, it was exciting for the time that I got here. Um, I really wanted to thank Sean and Barb for their work on the budget and the department heads as well and the committee. Um, I am like, I guess this is the third budget now that, um, I've done on council. And I'm very excited about this one because of, um, there was all that, like, narrative built into the budget that I thought was really helpful and very clear. Um, and definitely helps the community as well as myself just with understanding, um, exactly what's behind all of these decisions. Because there are so many decisions that get made that it's pretty overwhelming. Um, but the other side of that is the clarity we have in the coming, like, five years, I think, is, um, really exciting. I think we're able to, um, make extremely informed decisions, uh, looking forward many years. And I, gives me a lot of confidence that we're, um, that we're on the right track financially. So I just wanted to thank you for all the extra work to get that going. And I know, um, it's gonna get easier from here as well. Um, the more years we've planned ahead, uh, we'll be able to enjoy, uh, the benefits of that planning moving forward. Um, and then lastly, I just wanted to invite everyone to enjoy Thanksgiving. I'm looking forward to it.
Thank you. Ms. Dorsey.
Thank you, Mr. Stefano. I would just like to echo the comments of, uh, my colleagues up here on council. One, on the budget process that went rather smoothly this year. Um, and appreciate all the work and time and, and improvements that have gone into that process. Want to wish everyone a happy holiday. Thanksgiving is next week and right behind it will be Christmas. Um, and we've got, um, the, um, Shop Small, as Ms. Vaccaro said, and Old Fashioned Christmas coming on December second. Um, and we've got a couple of birthdays up here on, uh, the dais. I'd like to wish our mayor a happy belated birthday yesterday. And Councilman Allen, happy birthday today.
Happy birthday. That's right. Where's the cake? Thank you. Uh, Mayor DiBattisti.
So thank you. Thank you for the happy birthday wishes. Um, uh, three things. One, I'd like to say, uh, to all veterans, Happy Veterans Day, if we have any in the audience. I know the Chester County Bar Association this past Friday on Veterans Day had a wonderful, remarkable program that they had to transition from the historic courthouse to the, uh, History Center. But the Westchester University band was wonderful and it was a wonderful ceremony, uh, honoring our veterans. So that was great. And today I had the opportunity to, uh, bring a proclamation, uh, to a hundred-year-old person by the name of Ms. Myrtle Nash at the Hickman today. And, uh, Channel Six was there and I understand that she was on Channel Six. And her grandson, uh, is, uh, a graduate of the Naval Academy, uh, First Lieutenant in the Naval Academy. Uh, and he is now in, uh, jet school, uh, because he went, he graduated out of the pilot school and he's in jet school now. So I thought that was remarkable. Her and her family were there. Hundred years old. She's beautiful to see her, you know? And she just really had a stroke last, last week, so, but she bounced back pretty quick. And happy holidays to each and every one of you here this evening, so. Uh, and I'll see you on December second. The December second, the Christmas parade is coming back, so we'll see you then.
Thank you very much. Um, yes, thank you to everybody, uh, for voting. Uh, we had some really great turnouts in, in the Fourth Ward. It was a little bigger than it would normally be in a midterm election, which was great. Thanks to all the poll workers down there. Uh, so great to see them and, uh, I was kind of bummed this year. Normally I help them break down those old flimsy things that hold the, but they didn't use them this year. They just had trifolds. So I didn't, they didn't need my help, so I felt bad, but, uh, um, so just thank you to them for their, their hard work and, and doing that. Um, I'm letting everybody know that tomorrow night, I don't know who else is attending, I think you remember who was able to, but a meeting, uh, with the university, a couple of officials there and some, some of the leadership and the students and the fraternities and sororities. Uh, I'm hopeful that I can come back next month and, and, you know, report back some of the discussions we had. I think it's a really, uh, great next step and I want to thank Dr. Dietrich for, uh, for helping facilitate that. So I'm really looking forward to those conversations tomorrow night with the, with the students to talk about the ongoing issues we always, we always face here. Um, yes, December second, the Christmas parade. If there's also something else going on that night, um, at the Chester County Art Association, that weekend, I think it's Friday night and the Saturday, there is, uh, Christmas Kindle Market, if I'm saying that right. And, uh, Yours Truly will be playing Friday night from four to eight. So if you want something to do before the parade, stop by, check out the, the artisans there and all the crafts they have there. Listen to some, um, okay mediocre jazz music and, uh, and check out the, uh, get yourself in the spirit for the parade, so. Thank you. Okay, thanks, everybody. Let's move on to item five, which is discussion.
Mr. Stefano.
Yes, Mr. Flynn.
Uh, I would like to make it a, a, a change to the agenda to add back the, um, Finance Committee, letter G, the discussion under Liquid Fuels. It'd be a brief discussion. Uh, I've talked to, uh, Barbara Leontei and also Mr. Diane Edwards.
Okay, so we'll, we're gonna pull, we're gonna pull item G off of consent, put it in discussion. We'll, we'll discuss that after.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, cool. So item A, under discussion is consider approving the three-year term reappointment of the following Rail Restoration Committee, uh, members. We have the three members and there was some discussion last night about that. So, Ms. Dorsey, you wanna comment?
Yes, I would like to, um, table the appointment of the three rail, rail restoration committee members until council has an opportunity to do a little bit more research, um, based on the information that we have, um, has been shared with us in the last, recently.
Okay, thank you. All right, so that, we can, we can table that. Uh, I can allow, I can allow comment, Mr. Norley, sure.
Not sure with that, how that, so Jordan Norley, uh, resident member of the committee. I'm not sure how, how, um, any information regarding the rail, um, is pertinent to the, uh, reappointment of law, of rail members.
I, I think it's, one, in the purview of council to do that.
Certainly.
Two, um, I think that given some of the information and, um, just challenges that we have witnessed over the last couple of months, um, that we want to revisit how we are going to move forward with the Railroad Restoration Committee.
How you'll move forward with the Railroad Restoration Committee in what respect?
We feel like it's something that we need to discuss further.
Who's, who's "we"?
The council.
When did you have that discussion?
Um, we've been discussing it based on the meeting that I attended last week and shared here last night. Um, and comments that I made last night based on, uh, Joanne Kelton's, uh, report.
Okay, well, I mean, I, I think that conversation should probably happen in the public for transparency reasons.
It did happen in public. It happened last night.
Well, yeah, there was a conversation last night with regards to a report, but I still don't see how that's related to the re, uh, appointment of, of certain members. Um, it's actually unprecedented. It's never, ever occurred where, um, there's applicants for various boards and commissions, um, that there's no competition for, um, that haven't received that reappointment. So, um, just really kind of need to understand why, um, council is taking such an unprecedented action, um, here by not reappointing. And I think it's, uh, appropriate to, to, to have that conversation a little bit. I'd love to clear up anything that I can clear up. Um, certainly, let's, let's, let's have a, a quick conversation about that.
Do you think the Rail Restoration Committee and the Historic Railroad folks in general are, have a positive and, um, a healthy relationship at this point?
Well, uh, you know, I'll back up.
I'm not pointing fingers either side. I'm just saying, in general, between two parties, do you think that they have a healthy relationship and are working together?
Sure. Well, just to, just to give you a little bit of history, um, since twenty fourteen, um, we've worked extremely well together. Um, you know, it was last year that I was, you know, I've always felt a kinship. I mean, I'm a member of that organization. I've, I, I go on the train often. Um, I'm a huge supporter of that organization. Um, as mayor, I went out of my way last year to, I mean, we, we got mugs made. Remember the twenty-five-year mugs made? We brought them all in, in here. I gave, I gave about twenty-five keys of the city out, thanked them for their service, uh, wrote a resolution, all those things. So I, I think we've had a, a wonderful relationship until about two months ago. Um, in, at, at which point, my understanding is that the for-profit company Four States, um, and the Westchester Railroad Heritage Association had a change in tactics. Um, and instead of wanting to continue to collaborate, um, in a friendly way, they decided that they didn't want to do that anymore with the committee. Um, I'm saddened by that. It hurts me, actually, because I thought I was kind of their friends, frankly. Um, so, you know, right now, no. Um, right now, no. Um, but I also don't think that's up to the Restoration of Rail Service Committee. It takes two parties to decide to collaborate and cooperate. And the Restoration of Rail Service Committee is steadfast in its support for the ongoing operation and is steadfast wants to collaborate and cooperate. We just wish we, you know, they, they would continue to do that. Um, I will say, from the, the, uh, meeting last Wednesday, um, which was, you know, very exciting to get to the county level. It was the county's meeting. It was their agenda. Uh, the county's engaged now as a work session. Um, you know, it really, really moved us up here and they'll continue to be engaged. Um, and what came out of that meeting is that, uh, Four States would actually, for the first time, um, provide a written list of the concerns that they have um, with the direction that the Restoration of Rail Service Committee is going at direction of council in the resolution that, that you all passed. Um, so I'm thinking, hopefully, once, you know, all those concerns are laid out and are, are on the table and we're able to address those, um, you know, hopefully that, that's, that's, you know, some building blocks towards, uh, you know, regaining that collaborative relationship that we had for years and years and years.
Understood. Okay. Further thoughts? I mean, it's been motion to table, so we're gonna have to table it until next month.
You, you can't, just one motion to table and that's it?
Somebody would like to second it?
I'll second that motion.
Okay. So the motion's made in a separate second. We don't have to vote on a tabling, but if it's made in a second, we table it, correct? Parliamentarily, is that right?
You can always take a vote to be, to be totally sure, but I, but I think majority can table. But go ahead and we should call the vote, just to be sure.
I, I don't think we need public input to table. If we're, they made to table it, I don't think we're gonna spend the time to discuss it, so. Yeah, I, I don't think we'd have to. If it's being tabled, that means we're gonna discuss it at a future meeting, so.
May I be heard?
So, I, okay, I understand, but it's being tabled, so we're not gonna discuss it because we're not gonna take any action on it tonight. So we're not gonna take public comment on it. I mean, and we don't have to vote on it because of tabling. We've never voted on a tabling before, so.
Could I be heard?
Okay, not on this. We're not gonna take the public's, uh, comment on it.
Well, I frankly find it insulting that the Borough Council would table the reappointment of members. I've been a member of that committee for years.
Okay, we're, we're not gonna take public comment on this. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Okay? All right, so that has been tabled. We're moving on to item B, which our discussion and hopefully, final, final discussion of the twenty twenty-three Gay Street timeline, uh, the closure timeline. Uh, I think last night we had plenty of comments and discussion and, and I, we can still hear some more tonight. Um, I think if I'm, you know, if I'm clear on where council, I think, stands based on what we heard last night is that we are, we seem like we have somewhat of a compromise on a weekend closure, Friday to s, Friday to Sunday or Monday morning, whatever technically tends to be, um, and help me on the dates here. May one to, uh, through October, is that, is that about right? Okay, I mean, Mr., uh, John, if you want to just clarify so I get to all those dates right. I'm not saying, speaking out of turn.
Yeah, the bid suggestion would be that at least May first, uh, through the, let's say, through the end of October. And if council could also clarify, there has been some confusion and I've gotten a lot of phone calls, I'm sure some of you have, that the intent is for all four blocks as traditionally has been done. We just say that for the record because
Gotcha.
there's a bit of confusion that's been thrown out there and I got a lot of restaurants who are upset that that might not occur. So I just wanted to
Yeah.
check that.
Yeah, there's been no
Cool.
change that.
All right, thank you.
So what I'll say is, let's first, anybody else on council have any further comments or questions or clarifications? Mr. Allen, go ahead.
Uh, yeah, I was actually completely silent on this last night and I've been, um, thinking about this a lot. And, um, I do think a lot of the concerns we had, you know, we heard last night are definitely genuine. Um, I've been trying to zoom out and view this as holistically as I can. Um, and when I think about this issue, um, you know, like, as widely as possible, I think about like, three stakeholders that really concern me are, um, our emergency services would be one, um, our residents would be the second one and then our businesses would be the third. Um, and I do think it's, you know, probably a good idea to talk safety first. And, um, that's something that had, you know, initially been a pretty big concern of mine uh, because I do remember, um, getting the report from our emergency services, um, initially. Um, that talked about the, um, challenges that they would be up against to make this work in a, in a safe way. Um, I was, you know, as we worked through this, I was satisfied, um, with the, with the responses we got from our emergency services. It seemed like, you know, we figured it out and their solutions were made. They're really great at what they do. Um, they were able to get some practice under their belts and it seemed like it was able to be done safely. Um, so to me, that stakeholder was taken care of. Um, I think, uh, what's interesting about considering the residents, especially relative to the businesses, is, um, you know, John O'Brien does a really great job, um, getting feedback from the businesses. And it's just a lot harder for us to do with the number of residents that we have. So I think it's, um, I'd love to be able to make pie charts like, uh, John O'Brien gets to do about, um, you know, different levels of support or different preferences for different options. Uh, I just think that's really difficult for us to do with our residents. Um, it does seem to me that, um, you know, Ms. Vaccaro, like you were saying, people are like, look, let's shut this down. Like, I keep getting that feedback from residents. Um, I haven't gotten a lot against the closure, if anything, literally at all. Um, and this goes for just people I talk to in everyday life and people who are constituents of mine as well. Um, so when I think about that stakeholder, I think it's a little bit more questionable. So when I think about that stakeholder, I think it's a little bit more questionable. We can't say for certain. But to me, it seems like that's, that opinion tends to lean towards closure as much as possible. And Mayor DiBaptisti made a great point last night that that is not the unanimous voice at all, that there are differences of opinion in our community about that. I do think that it leans towards closure. And then I went back and reviewed the documentation that we got from the bid about the closure. And it was a little refreshing to read it again because it had been a while for me, but it was 20% said the closure hurt their business, 53% said there was no impact, and it was 28% said that it helped. Only 15% did not support closure in some fashion. And in terms of Thursday through Sunday, verse 24/7, it was 42 to 58% split in the favor of Thursday through Sunday. So that is, that shows that our businesses, as a majority, support Thursday through Sunday, but it's not an overwhelming majority at all. So when I think about that opinion in the bigger context of the decision, I think of our residents as, if I had to guess, it would be a bigger divide than, you know, like a 58/42 split. And I think that would be in the favor of a seven-day-a-week closure. And I think about how the EMS services can function. And then, just to go down into the details of the businesses who had very real, genuine concerns about a full-week closure, I think some of those arguments, especially like around parking, like parking is an issue regardless. So if we don't have, can you remind me, Mr. Metric, the number of spaces on Gay Street? Do you have that number?
About 65.
So if we don't have those 65 spaces versus having those 65 spaces, parking is bad, and parking is also bad, either way, is the way I kind of see it. So I think it's true that this will make it worse. But I think looking at that net effect and context of how bad it already is is important. And then in terms of delivery vehicles, I agree with what you had to say, where I always feel like I'm, like, skiing when I'm trying to drive down Gay Street in the middle of the day, like weaving between different trucks. It feels like I'm in a video game sometimes. It kind of cracks me up. And the difference there is that, for the most part, those trucks are gonna be in front of the businesses that they're servicing. So that inconvenience is, you know, mainly inflicted upon those who are benefiting from the service. So I understand that difference as well. But again, when you look at that net effect, it's not like we're creating a problem that doesn't already exist in a slightly different fashion now. So when I look at the big picture, I still do support a seven-day-a-week plan. I don't know how we fix the parking, truthfully. We could deck some lots, sure, and that's stuff that, you know, I think we're gonna talk about over the next few years. And in terms of deliveries, yeah, it's tough, you know. But when I look at the whole picture, it's hard for me to go against a seven-day-a-week closure given what's in front of us right now.
Thank you, Nick. Any other comments up here on council? All right, I will open it up to any, any public comment if there's any further comments from the public by anybody.
Hello. Thank you all for your service. Very much appreciated, especially Mr. Flynn, Mr. McCoy, who, my name, Jason Brennan, I live at 420 North Matlack Street in First Ward. I'm also a member of Katie Mack Education Foundation, which owns and operates Katie Mack Floor Design on 367. As a, both a business owner and a resident, I am a proponent of 24/7. That being said, I understand the challenges that all of you have faced with all of these decisions and understand and appreciate if it is a weekend-only, that's a weekend-only. It is what it is. I guess what I would like to request, if possible, is understanding how we move forward after that decision and how we are going to work together as a community, business owners, residents, and in government, to figure out if it is in fact possible to do the seven-day-a-week or 24/7 option. So would very much like to hear about that and make sure that we can all communicate, communicate together on that. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. So I, we, you know, we had a meeting, we had a couple of meetings with our traffic planning design team with a lot of public input. And, you know, we have some ideas put in place for like a permanent infrastructure. And I think, once those are flushed out and once those start getting implemented, we can really start pinning down on like a permanent solution going forward. And I think, you know, for me personally, I love the seven-day-a-week closure. I just think that this year, it really makes more sense to stick with the weekend. But I, I think that if we get those permanent structures in there, it's something that, that council should and will keep looking at going forward to have a plan, for sure. Yeah. So, yeah, and those plans that were presented, nothing's been voted on yet. We actually haven't seen them as a full council yet. So those are, those are coming soon, hopefully. Yeah. If that answers any of your question, hopefully, but that's all. Any other comments on this? All right. So if that being the case, then I think it's in order that somebody makes a, a, a recommendation by way of motion.
Do you want me to make a motion?
The wording, I think.
Yeah, I think. I'd like to make a motion that we begin the weekend closure of Gay Street consisting of Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, starting May 5th, 2023, through October 29th, 2023.
Okay.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded on that language that Mr. McGinnis presented. I'm not gonna repeat it. Anybody, any further discussion before we call the question?
Can I ask that that be clearly brought to another vote next season, earlier than the, maybe?
So you're, you're saying that this is just for next year? Okay, yeah. Can, is that okay for the, the, the motion? And the motion and the, and the second, are you guys okay with that change? To, to just clearly state that it's for 2023? Did you say that in there? Okay, I'm sorry.
Yes, I, for the people at home, I did state 2023.
Okay, there you go. Okay, thank you. Sorry, thank you. Is that, that, you're good, Ms. Vaccaro?
Comment on the motion. The mayor brought up last night, the, the longstanding business that's been in the borough since the, since the beginning of time, which is Taylor Music Company. And if we do shut down 24/7, we have to imperatively take in consideration their requests, you know, for access to their building, going just weekends only. It allows for them to do commerce, like every other business. And I think the mayor met the, the, the request of Taylor Music, and by us agreeing just weekends only, it satisfies that.
Thank you. Okay. With no further discussion, I think it's time to call the question, Mr. Metric.
Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
Ms. Vaccaro?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. McCoy?
Yes.
Ms. Dorsey?
Yes.
Mr. Stefano?
Yes. Okay, motion carries 7-0. Very, feels very good to finally have a conclusion on this, 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 this topic. And I just want to thank everybody who gave input on this. I know it was, a lot of stakeholders had, had a lot of reasons for their opinions, and I, I'm really confident this council listened to all of you. And I think we made a decision that I think is in the best interest of, of all parties to the best of our ability. So thanks to everybody who put time and effort in and put comment and everything. Okay, moving on, we have another discussion item. We're gonna be pulled off G, which reads, approve a transfer from the General Fund to the Liquid Fuels Fund to satisfy the audit in the amount of $404,521, and to modify the 2022 liquid fuels budget to allocate for a $404,521 additional expenditure. Mr. Flynn, you were the one who requested this to be pulled off.
Yes, last, last night didn't sit well, as we were going through it. And we had some discussion with administration over, over the situation. And this morning, when I woke up, I should probably never go to sleep because when I wake up the next day, I have epiphanies. It still didn't sit well. During our work session, the finance work session, this, this topic came up. Ms. Leonti gave us a rundown of why we should do the situation. And then last night, and during that, during that meeting, the Finance Committee meeting, tongue-in-cheek, that it was brought up that we were gonna do money laundering, which didn't sit well with me as well. Last night, when we asked the Director of Public Works about transferring the money around, we were assured that PennDOT was on board with our plan. And his last comment was, we'll try to get it approved. So that didn't sit well with me. So, so this morning, and then I brought up, when we do refund the, the General Fund with the money, the $404,000, when we transfer it back, my question was whether or not, since we bought the street sweeper for $223,000 out of the American Rescue money, that money should go back into the American Rescue money for us to use other places. Then Ms. Leonti made mention that the, the American Rescue money was in the General Fund, which didn't sit well again because I felt that those funds should not be commingled because they don't belong to be commingled. And it was brought to our attention last night that the American Rescue money is in the General Fund. Okay? I talked to Mr. Edwards this morning, and he did not have a strong opinion of, of who will approve the PennDOT reimbursement. And then I talked to Ms. Leonti, and we agreed that there was a little bit of miscommunication last night. And I asked Ms. Leonti to be prepared tonight to explain to us exactly where the money sits and where it's going to go when it comes back. So with your permission, I would ask Ms. Leonti to explain the General Fund, the commingling of the funds, as well as what happens when the money goes back so council understands, you know, exactly where the money's going. Ms. Leonti?
Thank you. So as I explained last night, this money is... So when this transfer is completed, when the liquid fuels money transfers the $404,000 back into the General Fund, $245,521 will go back into the cash account that houses the ARPA money. That money is not commingled with any other General Fund money. There is a separate cash account for all the two trances that we received from the American Rescue Plan Act. And that encompasses those two trances, as well as any checks that we wrote on that account.
Did ask the question during Finance Committee meeting, how long do we have to let the money sit into the account? You mentioned, does it sit there a second, a month, a day, or after the audit? And we didn't get a real answer on that.
So we need to transfer this $404,000 from the General Fund into the Liquid Fuels Fund by year end. And in order to make the second part of this transfer to make the General Fund whole, we would need to transfer that money back into the General Fund by 12/31/2022 as well.
And the, the, other than the money for the street sweeper, which is a legitimate expense for, for the, the PennDOT liquid fuels, the balance of that money will go back into the General Fund, correct?
Yes, the other two items up here, the $100,000 for the electricity, as well as for the salary expense in Public Works, will go back in to the General Fund, into the General Fund normal operating account.
And can you tell council what you did to certify that this would be accepted by PennDOT?
So I can tell you that I was the first skeptic of this whole idea. But I, the first thing that I looked at was the information that we received from our PennDOT rep, Brian Dayton. I reached out to him and I laid on the table what the proposal was. I told him that we were looking to purchase a street sweeper that we had already paid from, from American Rescue Plan funds. And I wanted to know if that was a legitimate expense that we could do. And I was informed that, you know, we, we would be able to do that, but we should confirm it with the auditor. He's an auditor with PennDOT. So I went to the liquid fuels policy that is set forth from PennDOT. And I, I looked at Chapter 2, which specifically relates to municipalities. I looked on page 2.3, and I looked at all of the acceptable expenditures of the money. And the one item on here, number four, we are able to purchase major equipment, such as road machinery requiring price quotes or bids through our applicable municipal code. And that is allowable with 20% of our annual fuels, liquid fuels allocation. Our annual liquid fuels allocation for 2022 was around $415,000. If you multiply that, you don't get quite 20%. However, in prior years on our MS 965 that we have to follow, that we have to file with the state, we have an equipment balance that will allow us to be able to make this purchase. So my next phone call was to our auditor, Maely Dale Umbenauer. And I explained again the full situation. And he assured me that we would be able to do this because my big concern with this is, we've already reported on this expenditure through the ARPA funds with the Federal Treasury. And I was just worried that, you know, would that, you know, would that mess anything up there? And he assured me that we would just have to change our reporting that we do every year through them. So that, again, made me comfortable, and he did send me a link to the Treasury documents. And I found the section in there where if there's any, you know, changes in expenditures, there's a section on the reporting that needs to be completed. So we will make sure that that is done by 4/30/2023. I again reached out to PennDOT, the state auditor. I just wanted to confirm that, you know, we would have no problems. My other concern was, we did not bid this expense out. However, we did purchase it through Co-Stars, and that is an acceptable form through PennDOT. Their big stipulation is that the invoice needed to state on there that it was purchased through Co-Stars, and the Co-Stars number had to be on the invoice. We have all of that. And the other stipulation is that the equipment needed to be purchased new. If you purchase, you know, used equipment, there's an issue with PennDOT. So doing my due diligence, I'm completely confident that this is an acceptable expenditure. And I think what we're doing is right. We're making the General Fund whole as well, as well as putting the monies back into the ARPA account.
Council members, can you see the amount of work that our employees go to to satisfy what's going on in the borough? To Mr. Edwards and Mr. Metric's point, neither one of them were here when this mess took place. They both absorbed it because they were, they were new hires. But the, sometimes, you just, when, when you start to transfer money from place to place to place to place, it gets lost under a shell. And I'd like to compliment Ms. Leonti and her staff for the hard work that you do for us each and every month because it doesn't go unnoticed, by me at least. And Mr. Allen, and I know Mr. McGinnis.
Thank you. Thank you.
Great. Yeah, I appreciate.
Satisfy with the situation.
So, Mr. Flynn, I appreciate you just doing your due diligence and making sure that we're all clear on that and making sure that that is clear. And Barb, just that, like, all the information, the, the background checking, it's just awesome. Thank you, Barb.
Yep, thank you.
Any other comments on, on this?
One question that I don't want to rehash, but I guess my question is, when that money was not... when that money was not sent to Pico in the timely fashion that it should have been?
PennDOT.
PennDOT, yes, PennDOT. When it should have been, whose direction should that have happened under? The former manager, borough manager? Whose direction? Who should have caught that? Where's the consistency?
Well, I, 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 oh, I'm sorry.
So it's my understanding that um, the paving that was done in 2019 was done late in the season. And typically when that needs to be, if, for whatever situation that happens, we should have received prior authorization um, for that paving and that was not done. Um.
Who could have, who could have asked for that authorization?
Barbara's being nice because she doesn't want to throw her boss or current boss or former bosses under the bus. But um, ultimately, these kinds of big compliance issues comes down to the executive director. To the executive director, the borough manager, the person who has to make sure that we comply with things and we don't.
That was not you in 2019?
No, no.
This is 2019, correct?
Correct.
Am I correct?
Yeah.
Okay. Did you answer my question?
I believe Mr. Metric did. Um, that would have been under the prior administrative um, executive director, the former borough manager.
So I guess my question is, when we have big issues like that, that amount to non-performance of, of former people doing their job, what kind of recourse does the borough have in terms of insurance? When people don't execute their job in the way they should, is there any type of insurance that covers that?
Well, the, yeah, we're, we're dancing around a legal issue here, but since there's no harm here and there's no claim, uh, there's no
There's no accountability?
No, that's not what I said. There's no, there's no um, injury or claim that can be made out of this oversight. We didn't lose any money. We didn't, the road got paved. The money that was spent in 2019 was spent on a um, appropriate paving project in the borough. I could tell you the roads if I did my homework. Um, so there was never a question of misappropriation of funding. I just want to be clear about that. It was a problem of satisfying the bureaucratic um, reporting requirements to PennDOT because the paving took place out of season when the temperatures are cooler. You had to get pre-authorization to lay down the asphalt to make sure there aren't water and leaves and the temperature is high enough that the roadway will actually cure properly. That wasn't done. So that should have been caught. Yeah. But there, the roadway has been paved. It was paved and we could, it passed inspection. And uh, so there was no misappropriation of funding and, and the, the dollars were spent on a public improvement. The public improvement was put in place. We just ran afoul of reporting requirements. And PennDOT has zero tolerance on this. It's kind of like PennDOT's liquid fuel auditors, just what they say goes. So we had to comply with that audit finding and we're finding, we're, we're doing this move back because uh, you know, we can make the general fund whole with this action of council.
And, and let me just say this, there's no suggestion of uh, of misappropriation of funds. I guess my concern is if we did not have that money, we, it would have been problematic. So there wasn't any accountability because there, by the former manager, because there did not have to be accountability because we had that pot of gold sitting to the side. So I thank you for figuring out how to move things back and forth so that we're able to do what we had, what you all had to do to make it right. I do appreciate that, but it's somewhere along the line. It just seems like uh, some sort of accountability uh, should have been said, made, told, written uh, to the former uh, whatever he was. That's all. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Any other comments on this? Any public comment? All right. Then I think we need to uh, have a, a motion to approve this as a separate item since it's off to the discussion items. If anybody's so.
All right. Dirt's on my shoe. I make a motion that, that uh, we approve a transfer of the general fund to liquid fuels fund to satisfy the audit, the amount of $404,521 and to allow the borough to modify the 2022 liquid fuels budget to allocate for the 404, 521 additional expenditure.
I'll second it.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded to approve item G. Uh, any, uh, any further discussion? Mr. Metric, would you please call the question?
Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
Ms. Vicaro?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. McCoy? Ms. Dorsey?
Yes.
Mr. Stefano?
Yes. Motion carries seven zero. Um, moving on to item six, which is our consent uh, agenda. Um, if anybody wishes to make a motion to accept that, just make sure they mention that you should leave off item G since we just voted on it.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda, removing item G.
And I'll second that.
Great. I got a motion second to approve our consent agenda with the uh, with the subtraction of item G. Uh, Mr. Metric, please call the question.
Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
Ms. Vicaro?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. McCoy? Ms. Dorsey?
Yes.
Mr. Stefano?
Yes. Motion carries seven zero. Um, other business, uh, we have to announce the reason for our uh, executive session today, November 16th, 2022, executive session. We met prior to this for personnel issues and we are gonna meet after this for legal issues, correct, for briefly after this meeting. So. Okay. Uh, any other business? All right. Thank you. We're adjourned. Thank you.